All right, good evening, folks. I'd like to call to order the King George County Regular School Board Meeting. So we will begin this evening. Dr. Cutwright, one of our board members, will be participating remotely. Dr. Cutwright, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
What was that? Okay, Dr. Cutwright, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, great. So we understand that you cannot attend the meeting this evening due to a personal matter. Can you please state the reason, I guess, the nature of your personal matter for participating remotely this evening? And where you are participating from?
I'm participating remotely in Oswego, New York for a business meeting.
All right. Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve Dr. Cutwright to participate remotely this evening?
I move that we allow Dr. Cutwright to participate remotely this evening.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Dr. Cutwright, welcome. All right, so now we will begin with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. And our pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by the Sealston PTA. All right, please be seated. Although, PTA, would you like to share anything with us this evening?
Would it be okay if I just said something?
Certainly, Ms. Howard.
Thank you. To put my glasses on, I'm not able to see. I typed something out just so that I wouldn't forget anyone. And I just want to say, good evening, I'm Mrs. Howard, I'm the principal at Sealston. And just six short months ago, October to be exact, I contacted Terri Rinco to inquire about getting a PTA rechartered at Sealston Elementary. I was met with instant enthusiasm and support. And one month later, a virtual meeting was held and a new board was formed that evening. From that day, it has been full steam ahead in support of a successful PTA. These women have harnessed their talents to implement rewarding programs that take years for many PTAs to put together. The board, the PTA board is Mrs. Green, Mrs. Naimi, Mrs. Sheridan, and Mrs. Velasco, along with many other families who have worked tirelessly to quickly organize staff appreciation events, overwhelmingly successful fundraisers, design and offer spirit wear, as they're wearing tonight, staff and student incentives, such as silly stringing the principal, organizing a scholastic book fair that resulted in approximately $10,000 worth of books being donated to the staff and our school library. The PTA has planned a teacher and staff appreciation week that is both inclusive and while quite frankly, will probably be very hard to replicate. Finally, we will be ending our year with a most amazing field day, filled with fun and memories, thanks to the Sealston PTA. These are just a sampling of the successful events that in just six short months the PTA has implemented, or that will take place over the next few weeks. So I'd like to take this opportunity, on behalf of the entire Sealston's school community, to thank the PTA for their unwavering support and continued enthusiasm. We appreciate all that you've done to make Sealston an amazing place for students, staff, and families. And thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
All right, thank you, Ms. Howard, and congratulations to you all on successfully setting up and reestablishing the board. That's awesome. All right, we will move on to the VSBA art participants. Ms. Higgins, I believe?
Good evening, madam chair and members of the board. Thank you for giving us a little bit of time this evening to recognize our student artists across all five of our schools. Tonight, we would like to recognize the students who participated in the VSBA art contest. So students, when I call your name, if you wouldn't mind, please coming forward. We do have a certificate for you. And you can just come up front to your artwork. And if you wouldn't mind, holding your artwork for all of us to see. And then we'll take a picture once everyone is assembled. And parents, if you would like to take a picture, or a few pictures, you are welcome to do that as well. So first, from Potomac Elementary School, we have Katrina Madison. And also from Potomac, we have Paulette Samuel. You're very welcome. From King George Elementary, we have Logan Conrad. And also Tessa Watson. From Sealston Elementary, we have Chase Miller. I don't think. And also Yasmina Perez. From King George Middle School, we have Grace Zook. And Abigail Shones. And from King George High School, we have Kira Peters. Kira could not be here this evening. Congratulations, if you guys could just scooch together.
I was admiring the artwork before you all got here. You all did great and amazing jobs. Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Higgins. All right, next up this evening, Mr. Bradshaw and the King George Education Foundation Recognition of Donors and Grant Innovation Awards.
Thank you for having us this evening, school board. As you know, we normally have an annual evening of excellence. But because of COVID this year and last year, we haven't done that. So we will be back next year, barring any other future problems with COVID. But instead, this year, we're going to present to you the basic essence of that evening of excellence, which will recognize our outstanding donors, where we normally spend a lot of time doing that. I'll try and do that quickly tonight. And we will also go through and give you a quick highlight of what we've done with those donations in the last year, and talk about the innovation grants, which is also part of what we've done with those donations. We have four, five presentations from five different teachers, so it's innovation grants. Four of the teachers are with us here tonight. The third one has a video that we'll show on the presentation. So that's what we're here to do. Thank you very much for the time. We'll try and keep this quick. But it's important that we feel this is important to do, to show the community what is being done on behalf of the schools with the money that they gave us to do. And to give thanks for all those who have participated. Okay, so first, let me acknowledge our new board of directors. Some of these are going to be new names to you a bit. Heather Jennings comes to us from the, she's the lead of corporate operations at Bohead over in Dalton, UIC Incorporated. You know Chris Buck, been with us for a long time, running Fox Smart or Treasure and so forth. Katie Poole has been with us a good while. She is the innovation grant coordinator. She could not be with us tonight, because she is fighting an illness that we hope she succeeds and comes back as quickly as possible. Dave Tolliver is the new STEM lead coming to us. His mother is actually very well-known in the STEM circles. And if I can take the liberty of quoting Ms. Ciara Fraser, she's our personal hero in STEM teaching and education. Dave is an engineer that works for the base over in Human Systems Engineering. He has a strong passion for STEM and comes to us in that regard. I want to recognize two sets of volunteers here. Carol Mentor and Patrick Katie have been outstanding contributions to our team at Fox Smart. They are essential players for making Fox Smart Center work and operate. And we're very grateful to have them. Bob Dibble, Ms. Richard, Yvonne Richards, Ciara Fraser, and Dawn Hillis have been continuing volunteers for special activities and on our selection committee for Space Camp. I had done an outstanding job in all of that. They gave a lot of their heart and energy in the Fall Festival, for example, in making that be a very successful event, from that perspective. So go on to the next slide, please. This is a list of our outstanding donors monetarily. We have been blessed this year with a lot of community support that's allowed us to raise $16,000 for STEM, for example. This comes from 13 different organizations and 15 different individuals. We have, this includes the money we've raised for the innovation grants program from the payroll deduction program from the county. We're very grateful, all the teachers that make that happen, and members of this board as well, contribute to that. We've brought a lot of additional corporate donations this year, and some new organizations come onboard as we spread the word about the mission, what we're trying to achieve. Notably, under the individuals, I should point out, we're very grateful for John and Brandy Harrison, sponsoring the new space scholarship this year. We were able to send two kids because of them. And Ms. Scott, Mr. and Mrs. Scott and Samantha Kogle, who actually bought the greenhouse at Sealston. Very grateful for those donors coming forward this year. Let's go on to the next slide. We also get donations in terms of materials, and we call these in-kind donations. All of these come in and through the Fox Smart Center. They range from everything from school supplies to hygiene items, anything that kids may need in school. Point these out again, we would normally bring every one of these up on stage and say, thank you very much in person at Evening Excellence. But in sense of your time tonight, we don't have all evening to do that. So to point out a few highlights of this list, we're grateful for every one of them on this list. Point a few highlights here, we had two truckloads of backpacks, full school supplies, come in from Access I. And then shortly after that, we had four pallets come in from Walmart of school supplies. They had leftover from school season, right? Tremendous, tremendous impact Fox Smart really helped us out this year in providing the needs and supplies to the kids, students across the schools. Again, all of our volunteers are very, very helpful here. These individuals also provided material, in-kind support. Most notably here, I have to acknowledge Ms. Carol Rollins, who has an incredible knack for tracking down those extremely hard-to-find items, and special things we need to find. Nobody else can seem to find them, but Carol comes up with them. And she won't accept a dime for anything she provides us ever. She's truly a community angel, and we're truly blessed to have her in that regard. So let's go on to the next slide. So just to give you a few highlights of what we've done with those donations this year, and the impact we're trying to make in supporting the schools, here's a quick summary of some of the highlights from Fox Smart. As you know, we continue to respond to a wide variety of supports and needs from the councils across the schools, from school supplies to hygiene items. We also provided 60 gift bags for all the new teachers that were hired in the fall. Welcome aboard the schools, let them know they are appreciated, they're valued, and we really would like them to stay here and contribute as a community long-term. And let them know we're here as a foundation to help them, whatever we can do in that regard. We supported the angel tree with many backpacks for family services for Christmas. We provide school supplies for county school affiliated activities at the library, at the Parks and Rec with the Sheriff's Department, and the YMCA. We also provided donation toward the Sheriff's Office to help them provide the materials that go into the students' data package for crime prevention. Those aren't free, they have to be paid for. If you're not to the community asking for support, we're happy to do that. So that's a summary of Fox Smart highlights. There's a lot more that actually happened, and I won't take the time to go through tonight. But this is a quick survey of what the key highlights were. Next slide. On the STEM program, this is brand new since the last year. We started this April last year. And in that time, we've been able to award two separate Space Camp scholarships this year. And we raised enough money to send six or 10 students to Camp Invention, six this year and four last year. Because of the timing of this, April to April, all that fundraising falls in a 12-month cycle. So that's why it's reported out here. And on the STEM equipment side, we were able to purchase 142 different items and kits for the schools across the board, K through 12. These ranged the docket for big-ticket items like a $500 fish tank for high school, a $2,000 greenhouse for Sealston, all the way down to robots, bits and bytes, straw rocket launchers, environmental, or excuse me, green energy kits, as well as physics and AP kits for high school. And there's a lot more than I could list, I couldn't picture it on the page here. But there's a lot of things we're able to do, thanks to the donations of the county across the board. And we're very grateful to have been able to do that. Next slide. Now I want to step into the innovation grants. We awarded five different grants this year, and these are listed here in no particular order. This is other than the order we're going to brief them tonight. The first one is an apple a day from Mr. Yvonne Richards. Been cooking for the future from Ms. Rodriguez. Let it go, let it grow from Ms. Amber Doberly, and she's the one that gave you the green plant that sits in front of you. The innovation with iOS technology from Ms. Andrea LaRoche. And the music video will close out the presentation from Ms. Huber. So first up is Ms. Richard.
Can you go to the next slide? The next one. So this year, with the innovation grant, I purchased an Apple iPad, a case, a screen protector, and a special stylus called a crayon that I learned about at VISTI. We've been using our iPad to control robots, learn about block coding, explore the world with 3D paper merge cubes. And we've been learning to design and play games using the BlocksOEDU app. We are hoping to work on a project with the green screen in the next month, because that'll be a quiet activity to do during testing in our building. And we're very thankful for the iPad, the kids are very excited when we get to use it. And we look forward to many more opportunities in the future. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening. Next slide, please. So I have been cooking with my students this year. I titled Cooking for the Future, because these are truly life grants. And this is a life skill that I have been incorporating with my students. We've cooked every other Friday, a total of six groups. Next slide, please. So one of the goals of cooking is introducing themed cooking units. We cooked animal face toast, strawberry chow for Valentine's Day, jingle juice for the holidays, and veggie bowls, which you can see pictured here. Next slide, please. We increased overall communication skills. Many of the students use communication devices to make their choices. Some of them have visuals with Velcro that I've created each time. And then others are simply working on increasing their social skills by having a conversation with others. Next, please. We also worked on increasing fine and gross motor skills. So many of them had never used a knife, so I purchased safety knives, cutting boards, measuring spoons and cups. Next, please. Learning life skills. So about halfway through the year, I assisted the students with learning how to wash their own dishes, making their own food, and then using a toaster blender, heeler, and a griddle. And then the last goal for the year was the cooking food aversions and sensitivities. A lot of our students cannot eat a lot of the food, or they just are picky, picky eaters. So we incorporated many pictures and allowed them to choose and increase their ability to touch and utilize the food. As you can see here, a lot of these students had never eaten anything before. So many of them now eat plenty of food, which is wonderful. So I would like to thank you all for your time, and to the King George Education Foundation and the board for this opportunity.
Good evening, I'm Amber Doberly. And I am here with the Let It Grow, Let It Go, Let It Grow program. This is also known as the Buddy Club. It's a social gardening club where everybody is encouraged to participate. We work with the club members who are fourth and fifth graders. And then I teach kindergarten. And so I use the project-based lessons with my kindergarteners. They incorporate life skills, their physical therapy and occupational therapy goals get wrapped all into this. And so we're very excited about green spaces in our school, inside and out, in encouraging the students to bond with Mother Earth through this experience so we can grow some great gardeners, and so we can have more and more people that are kind of in love with the planet, which is what we're going to need if we want to keep it. All right, you can go on to the next slide. We learn about nature-made gardening, that's essentially sustainable gardening. Through composting, you can see there in the background, we have a compost bin. That's a giant cucumber plant. Go ahead to the next slide. And we have a worm farm to create soil. So we built the raised bed on top. And we want to condition that soil that's really just for grass or whatever, to be able to have our garden. And if you can believe it, you order those things through the mail, they come dehydrated in a bag. And then you get to put water on top of them, and the kids watch them go. And they're like, oh, it's a pretty wild experience. And so then we feed the worms, water the worms, and they build the wonderful soil through their castings, if you know what that is. And kids love to talk about that, too. So go ahead to the next slide. Yeah, their faces speak words. All right, go ahead. And then we also have the tower garden. And the babies that you have there in front of you, so these are spider plants. They are about the best air purifier out there in a closed environment. They will eliminate 95% of the toxins in 24 hours. It's really wild. And this tower garden brings the baby to adulthood in about four months, instead of about two years. And so then we can just take the babies from those big mamas and donate them, you know, encourage people to be a part of it. So we really love it. All right, go ahead. And this is the garden as of about a week ago, it is already, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's already blooming more. So that's where we're at for the outdoor garden. And I think that might be it. One more? Yeah. All right, we are so grateful, and the kids are so grateful, we love it every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. Next up is Ms. LaRoche.
Hi, I'm Andrea LaRoche. Okay, there it is. I'm a special education teacher at King George Middle School. Specifically, I work with eighth grade math. And I always have my eyes open for data-driven strategies, materials, and resources that can help my students succeed. Today, I'm going to show you how to deliver effective math instruction with engaging, high-quality visuals and efficient technology. So this is the title of the project, I'm going to show you how we use the technology. The grant money went to purchase an Apple pencil and an iPad. So this is how I'm going to do it. I'm going to show you how to incorporate five tools. These five tools that allow adaptations of general curriculum materials. These tools support specially-designed instruction in collaborative classroom settings. So first off, the iPad and Apple pencil. These are connected via Wi-Fi and Bluetooth. Right now, actually, I'm projecting my iPad screen, this is right here. And these allow me to stand alongside my students and stand wherever I need to in the classroom. And proximity is, this is essential for classroom management. So right now, if I step away from this. This is exactly what you're seeing right here. And I can be wherever I need to, if someone's off chat, I'm going to go stand between. So, and also the Apple pencil, the charge lasts about 12 hours. It takes about 15 to 30 minutes to charge. This will last 12 hours. It has almost died in instruction before, but I get a warning. It will pop up like I'm down to 5%. So all I have to do is plug it into the lightning port. And after 15 seconds, it will go for at least 30 minutes, maybe. So it's an easy problem to fix. And then also, I'm going to show you some of the applications. So right now, I'm in notability, I'm just going to shift out of that and show you this paper app. It's by WeTransfer. It's a digital sketchbook full of powerful tools to create beautiful illustrations. So right there, I've listed, this is an example. 8.9A and 8.9B SOL Math 8, those are the standards for the Pythagorean theorem, solving problems with right triangles. And this is essential, because you can apply that to a lot of real-life situations. So students need to be able to verify the Pythagorean theorem and apply it. And this is a really fun app, I'm just going to show you. You all know what a right triangle is. It's really neat for geometry and measurement strands. This is a lot of fun, the kids are like, how do you do that? I mean, that's a rectangle, but just the right triangle, it's really catching and engaging in there. It captures their attention. So that's the paper app. And then going back to notability, which is the main one I use. And then notability app, this is used only with iOS, so this is only available with Apple. And this is a powerful, yet simple app for note-taking and PDF annotating. The app creates notes that students want to revisit and actively use. So right now, I have an example, this is some notes from last week in a collaborative math class. It's a full inclusion setting. Students, it's a general education setting, but there are students with disabilities in that classroom. And these are the notes created from the lesson on SOL 8.16B, which is identifying the slope and y-intercept of a linear equation, given a table of values, a graph, or an equation in y equals mx plus b form. So this is a standard we're covering right now in the classroom in eighth-grade math. And you can zoom right up. You know, this just makes it so much better when you're teaching, especially in the coordinate plane and you're graphing. The students can really see and understand what you're doing. So this is just a recent example of class notes. And so at the very end, I'm almost done, the Google Drive. So the Google Drive is the last thing I was going to highlight. So with this note, and I've titled it, "April 25th School Board Meeting", all I do is I send these to my drive. It allows me to create readily-available digital copies of notes. So same-day class notes are uploaded to the Google Drive. It creates an instant PDF. So I just go to Google Drive and then send to Google Drive. And right now, it's sending to my Google Drive, and it's going to be an instant PDF. And I can share these with students. My, one of my collaborative teachers, we worked together last year, and we teach two sections together this year. And these notes are posted daily in Canvas for all our students to access. And so, just conclusion, so you know there, I want you to know there's documentation supporting the effectiveness of this already. So during the 2020-2021 school year, for virtual learning, this was used with five sections of Math 8, so one self-contained setting and four collaborative settings already. Because I had used my personal iPad, and now the school has one that is to stay with the math department. And the students responded positively to the technology. It was evidenced by student engagement during virtual learning, and also an end-of-year survey that yielded positive results. And I have that, I'll give it to you. As a special education teacher, I support accountability and standards. And technology has the potential to make aspects of education more equitable in many ways.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, we have Ms. Huber's presentation. Ms. Huber couldn't be here.
Ms. Huber couldn't be here tonight, but she had prepared a video. This is the whole purpose of the project, was to create a music video using her choir class, choral class, and the community to say thanks to the first responders, to the police, the school board, and all the leaders in our community that helped us get through COVID in the last year. So with that, could we please play the video?
Thank you, King George County.
Thank you, King George County.
Thank you, King George County.
Thank you, King George County. We appreciate you.
We know it's been hard, but thank you.
Thank you, King George County.
Thank you so much to our first responders.
Thanks for always being there.
Thank you, King George County.
Thank you to our moms and dads.
Thank you to our teachers that have helped us so much.
Thanks for never giving up.
Thanks for never giving up.
We appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Thanks for never giving up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe you can see why we are extremely proud of what every one of these teachers accomplished this year with a little bit of money that we were able to give them. Grants not to exceed $500 apiece, and they did phenomenal things with each one of those grants this year. We're very, very proud of them. So please join me once more again in a round of applause for all of them. Thank you very much. That closes my presentation unless you have any questions.
I'd like to simply say thank you for your effort in supporting the organization. But all I can say is just, wow, this has just brought me to tears. And I don't do that very easily. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's hard to, I wish we could end on that note, but now we've got to do consent agendas and action items. So anyway, thank you all. Awesome stuff. All right, like I said, hard to follow that. Okay, so now we will move on to public and employee comments. We do, okay? So, all right. So ask that as you come to the podium for public comment, please state your name, your relation to the school division, your voting district, and we'll ask that you limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. All right, so first up, we have Michael Brown.
Hey, good evening. My name is Michael Brown. My relation to the school district is children in the county. And I'm James Madison District. So I appreciate the school board being willing to consider updating the JAG exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. Updating this policy is important to my family. God has called my wife and I to transfer children the way they should go. That includes our children needing to be excused from attendance at public school due to bona fide religious beliefs. We have previously received confirmation from the county that the school board had received our request to be excused from compulsory attendance in King George schools as provided in Virginia Code 22.1-254.b1. Our children were hereby excused. Each year, we receive a letter from the superintendent, not from the school board, requesting we provide the same information about our bona fide religious beliefs. Around February of this year, we received a letter indicating our children were excused. And then about one week later, we received a correction letter indicating our children were not excused. It was a correction letter that quoted from the JAG and that any request for exemption from attendance shall be presented annually in writing to the superintendent or superintendent's designee. I have heard that many other families in the county experienced this unfortunate churn and confusion. My concern about the current JAG policy is multifaceted. However, two primary concerns are requests for annual submission of bona fide religious beliefs, and there is verbiage that is left out of the JAG King George policy based on the Virginia Code. My request is that the JAG policy be modified to ensure any request to be excused under Virginia Code be submitted to the school board to better align with Virginia Code. My second request is for excusal from attendance under Virginia Code remain standing indefinitely and not require annual resubmission of the same bona fide religious information unless something changes with the family, such as admitting a child in public school. My third request is for the JAG policy to reference the Virginia Code instead of paraphrasing or leaving out verbiage as identified in the Virginia Code. My family's bona fide religious beliefs have not changed from year to year as God has called us to train our children and is unnecessary to request the same information from our family and other families excused under this Virginia Code every year. It creates an unnecessary burden on the families, as well as the county, who has to process these requests every year. At least 24 other counties in the state of Virginia do not require annual submission of religious beliefs once children are excused, and only five counties do require annual resubmission, King George being one of them. I provided this information to Mr. Bush for passing along to the school board members for consideration. I've also provided a letter from Scott Woodruff, Senior Counsel at HSLDA, addressing the annual submission for religious exemption. Furthermore, I have provided to Mr. Bush a letter from King George County Schools in the past not requiring religious exemption requests to be submitted annually. I greatly appreciate your consideration in this matter, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next, Joshua Mills.
My name is Joshua Mills. My family and I reside in the Dahlgrin District in our school age. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, my family greatly appreciates the willingness of this body to hear and consider removing the requirement for homeschooling families to submit annual exemptions for sincerely-held religious beliefs here in King George County. The Lord called our family to homeschool eight years ago, and we've been faithfully following that direction ever since. Lord willing, we plan to continue homeschooling for the next 18 years until each of our children graduate and launch into the world. Six of those eight years homeschooling were completed in Stafford County prior to the Lord calling us to move to King George. It is the policy of Stafford, along with other counties like Winchester, for families to submit a religious exemption letter once for each child. This single submission is valid for the duration of the child's homeschooling experience and is only made void when the family relocates outside of that county or the family enrolls the child in public schools. There is no annual submission requirement for religious exemption in those counties. I would like to read one of the letters we received from Stafford County for a child we homeschooled there. This is as early as 2019. Dear parents, I'm pleased to inform you that Stafford County School Board, in action, taking its meeting August 13th, 2019, exempted your child from compulsory school attendance by reason of a bona fide religious belief. This exemption is continuing in nature and is not necessary that you reapply as long as you remain residents of Stafford County. Should you have other children for whom you desire an exemption from school attendance, it will be necessary to make requests on their behalf. I started my time by saying, stating that the Lord has called us to homeschool our children years ago. It was conviction laid in our hearts by God Almighty, processed through much prayer and fasting. I'm sure that each member of the school board here today has a friend or acquaintance who holds religious convictions. I believe that if the member asked, that friend would tell you, just like I will, that our sincerely-held religious convictions do not change from year to year. Therefore, it is our desire and petition to this body today for the King George County School Board to adopt a similar, single-religious exemption submission requirement and remove the annual submission requirement, thus reducing the burden on our families and that of the county of King George over the next 18 years. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Vance, do we have any comment online today? No? Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. So this evening, we have a four-minute from April 11th, 2022 special meeting. At 5:00 PM, the April 11th, 2022 regular meeting at 6:00 PM, and April 11th, 2022 special meeting at 7:30 PM. Would ask that the April 11th, 2022 special meeting, 7:30 PM meeting minutes be pulled and we will revisit them at the next meeting. Okay, thank you. So that being said, do we have a motion to approve the first two minutes?
Chair, I need to amend the first one, so.
What again?
I need to make an amendment for the 5 o'clock meeting.
Okay.
So I'll move to approve the April 11th, 6:00 PM minutes.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's right, okay, thank you. All right, Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. All right, so moving on to our action items this evening. First up, for consideration, we have the Carl Lee Perkins. Sorry, go on.
I think we can't pass at 5:00 PM. I can just propose an amendment, it's very small. It's simply the fact.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Okay, it says that I was present and I was not, so.
Okay, certainly.
That's a good point.
And we have a motion to approve the minutes from April 11th. The 5:00 PM special meeting as amended?
Make a motion to approve the meeting as amended for 5:00 PM on the 11th.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. Now we will move on to the Carl Lee Perkins grant. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This was the grant application provided for you last meeting as a discussion item, returned for you, hopefully for action tonight so that we could accept, again, funds under the Carl Perkins Act. These are federal funds that we use to support CTE programs. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move that we accept as presented the Carl Lee Perkins grant.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Rolls.
Dr. Benson, I'm looking at page 14 of the packet.
I'll add that Ms. Hill is here as well.
Okay.
To help answer your questions.
Good evening.
14, you said, Mr. Rolls?
Right, so under one, paragraph one, B, says at least three different career and technical education programs, not courses, dot, dot, dot. So what's the difference here between programs and courses? How does that get defined?
Do you want to address that or do you want?
Well, I don't have it in front of me. So I'm sorry about that. But so, programs being like the nurse aide program versus courses that make up the program. So at least three programs or courses. And I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, so if it doesn't say or, I can change that.
No, oftentimes, we talk about pathways that may lead to eventual certification in a given field. So I don't know if it's fair to use programs and pathways synonymously, but in this context, generally, it's a series of courses would be a program or multiple courses offered under the same type of course, I guess, or a more general heading, of course.
Thank you. Now, just going, may I also have anything before I, looking at page 25? And just look at the 22-23 plan. We're looking at almost $38,000 for capital, outlay, and equipment. I'm just wondering what kind of equipment we're getting for $38,000, if you can speak generally?
You're on what page?
Page 25.
It's page seven of the grant.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rolls, would you please ask your question again?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the table where it has the expenditure categories and for.
Schedule 18.
Yes.
Okay, so it has line item for equipment. And we're going to spend almost $38,000 for equipment. And I'm just wondering if you can speak generally to what, if those are a couple of large purchases or it's just a lot of small things?
Yes, so the actual purchases will be determined after the grant is awarded by the department. So what will happen was the Career and Technical Education Department will meet. We have a budget that we develop internally that breaks down that total among the different programs. But if a program should need more of that funding over maybe another department that, or another program that is being funded either through another grant or locally, then we can make a decision on what type of equipment would be, need to be purchased. So it's a generalization, lump sum amount of money that we write into the grant. But there is a percentage that has to be written into the grant. So we have to at least put no less than 40% into equipment. So we have to at least put no less than 40% into equipment. And so, equipment decisions are made by, as far as capital outlay, are made by the department where the greatest need is. So we determine which programs needed to be updated or aligned better with current job market equipment, so that we can make sure students are using equipment that is actually used in the field. So typically, the most of that funding does go to our trades classes, where equipment is very expensive, so it could be saws that are purchased, or pieces of welding equipment, or it could be something for our agricultural program and our greenhouse and things like that.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Any other questions?
The budget that we have is in our, that we currently use this past year is in the CTE minutes online from our last CTE advisory committee. So if somebody wanted to look at that list of budgeting for this past year, they could. So the decisions will be made for this upcoming year, once we are, provided the funding.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hill. Then my other colleagues have any questions? Dr. Cutwright?
No questions, thank you.
All right, well, unless there are further objections. We have on the table before us approval of the Carl D. Perkins five grants. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to the USDA Supply Chain Assistance Funding. Dr. Benson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is the good news, another good news happening, but Ms. Davis applied for and received a grant that we can utilize to provide school nutrition, I'm trying to think of the word, non-processed foods for our students. This grant is in the amount of $73,752.09. Essentially, these are, are funds that are being awarded from the federal government in recognition that right now, and for the foreseeable future, we're going to have some disruptions to supply chain of, of non-processed foods. And so this is awarded, and we appreciate Ms. Davis going after this on behalf of our students and their nutritional needs, but we're very pleased. It's before you, as our most grants, simply because when it's awarded, our county finance office needs to track this distinctly from other monies. And so in order to do that, they need to approve motion from you all to set up a separate funding account code, so that they can execute and track these expenditures separately. So we appreciate your consideration and your approval of this. This one is a little time sensitive in that it was fairly quick. I think the award is actually ready to be dispersed, or was dispersed, last Friday. So we'd like to get that account up, set up upstairs here with your approval.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Do we have a motion?
I moved to accept the USDA Supply Chain Assistance Funding in the amount of $21,900, I'm sorry, $21, wait a second.
It's the $73,000. Last paragraph? Is there any discussion? Dr. Benson, I have a quick question. So the, this grant, potentially others, but so for the next school year, we will be returning to the, what's terminology? The paid, paid meal service, right?
We do, I believe that, I believe that provision has been extended only to June 30th of this year, but I think Ms. Davis mentioned that last time she was.
Yes, yes, I believe so. Okay, yep, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Dr. Cutwright?
No questions, thank you.
All right, without further ado, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We will move on to our discussion items. We have before us this evening, a number of policy updates. So the first policy for consideration for discussion this evening is Policy JEG, Religious Exemption for Attendance Policy.
Okay.
So.
Madam Chair, yes, I have a package here for everyone, if you take one. I've emailed this to Dr. Carwright, except, Dr. Carwright, forgive me, there's a couple of small changes, which I'll email after this meeting. Okay, the key to this is pretty much like was presented by Mr. Brown. There's three things that I would like us to consider and look at. Number one is looking that, making sure that we follow the compulsory attendance requirement according to Code 22 dot 1 dash 254 B1, and that it's a school board that approves it, not the superintendent. And then the second thing is, is that it is not the type of thing that will have an ending date to it, and I'll talk about the reasons why in just a moment. And then the third one would be that we come closer to complying and following the verbiage of the actual state code. So the first thing you have before you, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, is a, the actual code itself, and I've highlighted in yellow down at the, the particular part of the code that we're concerned with, and it says, it's B1, "A school board shall excuse from attendance at school any pupil who, together with his parents, by reason of bona fide religious training or belief, is conscientiously opposed to attendance at school or purposes of this subdivision. The bona fide religious training or belief does not include essentially political, sociological, or philosophical views, or merely a personal code." And then it goes on to other things about juvenile and domestic relations and so on, but the main one is that particular paragraph right there. So on the second item, that's number two in the upper left-hand corner, this was when Dr. Benson had, as I spoke with Dr. Benson on a couple of occasions, he spoke with several at VSB A and others, and sent me this from the Attorney General's opinion, which was dated November 18th, 1988. And if you look at the very last page, I've highlighted in yellow, the key part to this It says, "This religious belief exemption, however, is not permanent. A prior opinion of this office concludes that the religious exemption is subject to annual monitoring by the local superintendent of schools. I am in agreement with this opinion, and is further my opinion that such monitoring should be reasonable and for the purpose of determining whether the basis for the religious exemption continues." And of course, there's others that he mentions there, but again, I want to point out, this is from the Attorney General in 1988, which was 34 years ago. And we'll kind of refer back to that in a moment. And the next one in the upper left-hand corner, page number three, document number three, this is from Christopher Clickka, the Virginia Religious Exemptions. He was the Senior Counsel of the Homestead Legal Defense Association. I also have a letter, which we'll read in a moment, from the current Senior Counsel. But he had written, if you look in the highlighted portion, that it is the school board itself, not the superintendent or any other administrator who is charged with the duty of excusing those who are entitled to the benefit of the statute. The statute does not permit a school board to insist on a parent submit a particular form as a condition to receiving the benefit of the statute. The statute does not permit a school board to compel a family to submit an annual request. Once the excuse is granted, it is in effect indefinitely. Furthermore, once the excuse has been granted, it is applicable in any other Virginia county to which the family may relocate. This is because the school board acts as the agent of the state in granting the excuse, and the excuse is in relation to state law, not merely county policy."
I'm sorry, Mr. Bush, could you tell me which number document you're on at this?
I'm in top left-hand, number three. I'm sorry, I wrote it in ink. It's highlighted. It's the one that the whole, it's a single page. Did you find it? Okay, I'm sorry. I'll probably pause more in between reading these. Okay, the last part of that is, it's, "Children excused under the religious exemption above are excused from all provisions of compulsory attendance, including the homeschool requirements. Families who are excused need not file an annual notice of intent or year-end assessment." And of course, he goes down in the bottom via, talking about the, how this coincides with the First Amendment right of free exercise of religious beliefs. The fourth document, top left-hand part, it says number four. This is our current JAG, Exclusions and Exemptions from the School Attendance, and I've highlighted two areas in this. The first one is, it, it summarizes what's on the state code. I would like to see us quote the state code, but we'll talk about that in a moment. But it's the highlighted portion, "Any student together with the student's parents by reason of a bona fide religious training or belief is conscientiously opposed to attendance at school." And the issue that was brought out by the two parents that spoke this evening, and by the way, thank you for that, is the highlighted portion says, "Any request for exemption from attendance shall be presented annually in writing to the superintendent or superintendent's designee." And that right there, I think, is one of the big things that are in question, is this yearly presentation of the exemption. The next one, number five, is a copy, and I'm sorry, it's a terrible copy, but is a copy of the current letter that is sent to parents who claim the religious exemption, and this is one that basically, if you look in the middle of it, and it's difficult to read, but it basically says that they have to file things yearly, they must give the names and dates of the children, the parents' names, the request, explanation, and so on. In other words, they must go through the entire process every year with every child, which of course, most of these homeschool parents just simply copy and paste every year, it's just a waste of time, well, excuse me, that's an opinion. Anyway, that's what they do every year, and obviously, they need to do it the first year for the school board to approve it, but then after that, I don't see why they should do that, have to do that every year. The second one is, next one is rather interesting. I would like us to go back what King George County Schools used to do. And that is, here's a letter from 2015. And this basically, you can see the name of the person is crossed off, but basically, this says, look in the second paragraph. "Accordingly, you are on no, under no obligation to submit annual progress or future requests for exemption in King George County unless and until other children reach school age. However, please know that as a fellow educators, we welcome any communication you care to provide in regards to your children's education." Obviously, we did the very thing that we're asking to do. Again, I have no idea what changed, I was not here. I spoke briefly with Ms. Hock, she was here during that time, but something has changed, and I'm not sure what it was, and possibly, Dr. Benson can give us some idea of what changed, but I would like this, I believe that this is the way we should proceed. I believe that that's what most of the divisions in the entire state are already doing. And the recent one, and I'm sorry, I just got this today, Ms. Gonzalez, so forgive me, I'm giving, this is addressed to you, Ms. Gonzalez, she's chairman of the board, and it is from the current Scott Woodruff, the Senior Counsel of the Homeschool Legal Defense Association. And basically, what he says is, and you can, again, I'm not asking that we're going to make a motion tonight, but I would like to put it as an action item, because there's a lot to go through with all of this. So I won't read the entire letter, but just a couple of points on this. Look at the third paragraph down. "Three years after this Attorney General opinion," it's the one that I read, "was issued, however, our office represented a homeschool family seeking the exemption. In the appeals court decision, the court unambiguously rejected as unsound one part of the AG opinion, as well as another one like it. The court said, 'The record shows that the school board and its attorney considered and relied upon two general, Attorney General opinions, both of which stated erroneously that the two-pronged test is the appropriate standard,'" and he quotes some certain cases. "'The fact that a court of appeals has rejected one part of the AG opinion as unsound should give the King George County School Board reason to pause before embracing any other parts of the opinion. It is also important to note that in the section of the Virginia Code dealing with the exemptions from school attendance," and he lists that, "'the exemption listed right below the religious exemption, the health and safety exemption explicitly authorizes a time limit on the exemption for such period of time as the court deems appropriate. No such time limit is authorized in the religious exemption.'" So you can see the need to list it possibly in the health and safety one, but there's no need to list it in the religious exemption one, it doesn't relate at all, and that's the reason why the AG's opinion was, was rejected. If you turn on the back page, it also, he references the 24 different boards in the state of Virginia who are currently not requiring this yearly submission, and then only, we're one of only five that this particular, the Senior Counsel, Scott Woodruff, could even find. We're one of only five in the whole state. I mean, there's probably others, but as he was researching, we're only one of five that require it, and 24 different divisions do not require. "Since this is a highly questionable whether the board has the power to replace a time limit on the religious exemption, I urge the board to do, not to do so. Requiring an annual renewal, so far as I have observed over the years, serves no useful function whatsoever and merely results in the unproductive expenditure of time for all involved." Now, in this last one, I've written what, what might, we might consider, but that will be at the next board meeting as a change to our policy, and I would like to put it as an action item for next time. There's a big part of me, I'd like to just simply get it done tonight, but that's just the way I do things, but we won't do that. I would ask that the board read through these documents, we put it as an action item for the next board meeting, to look at making a change in our code. The last thing I think is important is that, I'm not sure why we changed over the last eight years, I don't know what happened, and maybe Dr. Benson can give some, shed some light on that, but I think that it's important, one of the things, if you're claiming a religious exemption, obviously, you have a very strong faith in a belief. And one of the things I think that's important in that belief, and that is that for either the state, the federal government, or even the county, to get involved in a family's decisions about their education and about their faith, and requiring every single year to submit this over and over is almost as if, and especially, that was even referred to in that first Attorney General's opinion, which I highly disagree with, kind of keeping tabs on our parents in the district, and I think that that's not appropriate, especially in terms of religious exemption. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Rolls?
Questions mostly for Dr. Benson, just to kind of prepare for, we'll be action at a future meeting. So I will see, religious liberty is a founding principle of this country, very important that we discuss this, so I want to make sure that we have a good discussion about it, make a good decision here. So I do find it very curious, it only fell on five divisions that require us annually, but it's in the VSB A policy service here, which, I don't know the exact numbers, but I imagine a very large number of the divisions use it. So, I don't know, that, that'd be shocking to me if only five do it, and if, and if that's the case, then it's probably something, I conversation have the VSB A for one thing. But I guess, Mr. Bush already, Dr. Benson, I don't know if you can speak to this, or if you'd want to have somebody here next time to talk to it, but I'll see, King George changes policy over the past six years, I'd kind of like to know the logic behind that.
Yeah, I don't know, I can't speak to the, to the five divisions, obviously, but I know that our practice, you know, you all, we're happy to take any input or decision that you all want to advise in terms of regulating policy or changing policy, amending policy, and we'll put that into action. So I'm, I did, on behalf of Mr. Bush, or when he had the conversation with me, I did seek clarification from Elizabeth Ewing, she provided that Attorney General opinion. I'm happy to go back to her and present any recommendations you have for policy, if you choose to do so, and vet them through her legally. But I can't, I don't know, I, I know that what is currently being done seems to be aligned with what the current policy states, and that is the annual notification. So I assume the question is whether the annual notification should be part of the board's policy. Bottom line, is that? Yeah, so.
Sorry, yes, that is the bottom line to all this, and also, I find it curious, if the current Attorney General also agrees with this, then maybe she should write an opinion about it. And I don't want to disparage what she's done, she just simply is agreeing with some Attorney General from 34 years ago, which has already been appealed in court, but if she's written the current opinion, then that would be something we could look at.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bush, I think you're correct, the first one was 1988.
88, right.
And the, the confirming wasn't too long after that, was it? I don't think it was the current Attorney General who confirmed.
Oh, no, 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 it was actually, as I looked at it, there were a couple of Attorney Generals that confirmed it, but they didn't write, I don't know whether I say, use the word official opinion, but there were simply some passing comments that they agreed with the opinion of this Attorney General from 1988. So I, I understand what you're saying about checking currently with things, but looking the way it stands in all of the legal documents and what we see from the state, the code itself, and, and also 24 other divisions doing this, and we used to do it, I, to me, the biggest question is, why did we change, like Dr. Mr. Rolls said, and, but even if we cannot determine the reason why we changed, then I think that this is basically, it is showing that we're really in support of religious education, parents who are claiming this is an exemption, and we're supporting them in what they believe is right. And I just think that we need to do all we can to support the homeschoolers and the religious education people who are claiming that. religious education, uh, people who are claiming that as, as best as we can, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't, this is a really positive thing for the whole vision to do.
I just want to clarify, the homeschooling process is completely separate from.
Yes, yes.
This, this, uh.
Yes, it is, this is an attendance policy, I understand.
And Dr. Benson, I imagine, I don't have this information at fingertips, but if not, I guess it's something I'll look into, but, sounds like you're saying, you figure that we're, we're doing it this way, something, because it's the V S B A policy which we've adopted, and so I wanted to go back and do the research to see if the V S B A policy itself changed a number of years back. I guess that's probably something we should ask them.
Here it is.
I see what you're saying, I can check and see. But you are correct, just to, to reinforce, we do subscribe to the Virginia School Board Association for Policy Services, and they, uh, provide to you as a board, for consideration, any policy updates. After the board policy is adopted, then as staff, then we simply implement based on the policy. But to change what we do here locally would just require a change in policy, and so I'll be happy to backtrack that with V S B A.
But my understanding is, we can make a change in policy, it doesn't have to necessarily go through some approval process of V S B A, however, getting the recommendation is valuable, don't get me wrong, but it, they don't have to approve it, we have the authority to make the change, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. If challenged on a policy ever, um, you are, you are defended legally through V S.
Correct, correct.
Additional charge, if you, if you choose to amend your policy in a way that is counter what V S B A recommends to you, then you would be on your own as far as legal assistance.
I understand.
Well, I'll make that point right now, the V S B A, they're, when they talk about the law, they're always talking about how important local control is, so I think it's very important that we realize that the V S B A policy service is a service, it's just to make our lives a bit easier, but it's our policy, so.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's correct.
All right. I think I'll bring, well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And we're not going to decide tonight, but I think it's good to get out as much as we can right now, just so that we know what each person's thinking. Um, so, one thing that was mentioned is the concern about delegating the superintendent, and just personally, you know, by and large, we, well, not just by and large, we do, the day-to-day operation is in the hands of superintendent, not, not us, and so I think this could be borderline that, so, personally, not uncomfortable with delegating this to the superintendent, I would think, anything that's up to the, the school board, we can delegate, um, and, you know, we can get into details later, but, but I would be thinking is that we delegate it, but if there, if there are any denials, any denials would come before the board, is kind of what I'm thinking right now. Put that out there.
I see that, but that would go against the code.
So I don't think it would go against the code, it's a, it's a matter of, I'm in agreement with Mr. Rolls, I think it's a matter of, yeah.
But it says, "School Board," shell.
Understood.
Okay, excuse, so I guess, I hear what you're saying, but something at this level, I would think would be a decision of the school board, because it doesn't, it has to do with religion and faith, which that to me is a kind of a different section, as Dr., as Dr. Benson pointed out, it's not homeschooling, it is about religion and faith, which to me takes it at a different level, therefore requiring the school board and not somebody that we delegate.
So would you expect each request to come to us in, say, closed session or something for us to approve?
Absolutely, yes, because it's their religious belief, and therefore, very personal, but, and I, that's again, why I think it should be done by the school board and not by, um, an educator. You know, this, it's at a different level, in my opinion.
Okay. Ms. Hock, do you have anything to add?
I actually have a great deal to add, but I won't. I spent approximately 20 years working, it's on, what, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought I talked loudly enough. I spent about 20 years of my career with the King George School Board, working with the attendants, I was once a truancy officer, by the way, um, working with both the attendance policy and the pieces and responsibility that came with it, and with the home instruction policy and the people involved with it. And I, I have to tell whoever will listen, that that was probably the most important and interesting part of my job, and, um, it, it continued to be through the whole time, through the, all the changes that we went through, and I still have many, um, many fond experiences of students and some of their children who come to me today to thank me for the support that we were able to accomplish together, both the home instruction and the religious exemption and the public school system can actually work very cooperatively and very supportively to provide what this community needs. And, um, I, I think it is, some of it is bureaucracy and paperwork, but most of it is connection with the families in our community, and, uh, it, it is no disrespect to anyone in the position now or later that we go through changes, and bureaucracies go through changes, and we simply need to make sure that our community is served first and foremost. And I'll have more discussion if necessary, because I have lots of examples, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hock. Dr. Cut, Dr. Cutright, do you have anything to add or inquire?
Yes, Madam Chair. According to my research, the law states that the availability of a, of a religious exemption from public school attendance is guaranteed by law in Virginia in Code 222.1-254, and the code states, "A school board shall excuse from attendance, um, at school any pupil who together with his parents by reason bona fide religious training or belief is conscientiously opposed to attendance at school. And for purposes of this subdivision, the term bona fide religious training or, or belief does not include essentially political, sociological, or philosophical views or merely personal moral code. To wrongly prohibit a family from operating their homeschooling according to their convictions not only would violate 22.1-254B1, but also would violate their First Amendment right to freely exercise their religious beliefs." And there were two court cases that I'll quote, Wisconsin versus Water, 406 U.S., 205 1972, and State versus Wisner, 47 Ohio, um, Ohio State, 2D 181, um, and there's another court cases as well. The intent of 22.1-254B1 of the Virginia Code is to protect the right of families to freely exercise their religious beliefs in the context of educating their children. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Cutright. So as far as I'm concerned, I, you know, I don't see any issue with not requiring an annual, um, request for the exemption so long as it was not making us in noncompliance with the state code. So I guess to that, to that end, um, as far as making a change to our policy with regards to that, I would be fine with it, as long as it's vetted, I would, I would first be interested in the opinion of Ms. Ewing through V S B A, to ensure that we would, we're remaining in compliance with the state code by that, which it seems that we would, but I would like to know that. And then as far as the designation, um, or the, the authority of the superintendent or superintendent designee to, um, I guess, pass the verdict on that a, that a, that a family is, that a student is exempted from, from attendance at, um, in King George County Schools, I think considering we have a policy that states that, that it is a state law that that be afforded to families, um, in accordance with that statute, I don't see why there should be an issue allowing the superintendent to, like, I don't, I don't see that it would need to come to the board at every, in every instance, since that is our policy, so it should be implied that we follow our policy, which I think, um, in my mind means that that portion of our policy would already be, I'd be fine with keeping it the way it is.
So you would go, so you would, you would go against the, the state code?
No, 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 not against the state code, no, I'm saying that as a school board, it's our responsibility to make sure we're in compliance with state code. The state code says that the school board, you know, whatever, the, Ms., Dr. Cutright just read it, right, so that we cannot, whatever, any people, by reason of bona fide religious training is consciously opposed to attendance at school, right, that we shall excuse that. So in doing so, we as a school board have a policy that state we shall excuse students in accordance with that policy, and therefore, we would hope that our superintendent, right, it should be implied that that is the policy that we're implementing, so I don't foresee the need for each case to come before us as a board, that's all I'm saying.
But I think you're missing, I appreciate what you're saying, but I think you're missing a big point here. The discussion as to whether, the decision as to whether it be approved has to do with their statement, uh, about their belief system, correct?
Okay.
I believe that that is a decision that is not necessarily, and I appreciate Dr. Benson a lot, it's not that, but that should be a decision based on a group of people rather than one individual, because there's too much room for, uh, what I want to say, for individual beliefs to come in, that's why we have courts that have many people, we don't have just one person, because I believe that we as a board can make a decision about religious belief a lot more adequate than a single individual can.
Understood, okay, so, yes, go ahead, Dr. Benson.
I think this is a, your current policy clearly states the school board shall excuse, so that, that first, that initial.
Correct.
Request, I would agree, needs to come to the school board. If you were to amend your policy in the manner that Mr. Bush has, um, has suggested, the second issue about superintendent, superintendent's designee becomes moot, because that gets, right, pulled out, so there is no, and the way I read it, you know, approval on the staff side is germane to the annual notification, so if that's removed, that goes away, the only other clarification I want is, in your recommendation, Mr. Bush, you, you have the word, um, I'm not sure if this was meant intentionally, and so.
I'm sure I made a mistake.
Um, second, in the, the bulleted paragraph.
Okay.
Second sentence, I believe, yeah, you have once approved, there is no obligation to submit annual progress or future requests, so it, it's really just future requests, I mean, there's no progress, you know, progress seems to be more related to homeschooling, and again, I wanted to keep that.
Yeah, you're right, I was trying to be over cautious, so.
The future request for exemption in King George County, I, and from what you said, I assume, well, I won't go down that road, but, and then it says, "Unless and until other children reach school age." And I'm not sure if that's, um.
Well, what I was doing, and I apologize, I was actually quoting from what used to be our policy at King George in that letter. The letter that was written in 2015, I was trying to be.
I see.
Cooperative with what we used to have.
I would simply recommend you, you strike that because.
I will.
This will apply to each student individually.
Okay, yes. I think my point was, is I was trying to get.
Each person.
Kind of understanding or agreement that this is what we used to do, but, um, I only added it because of that, so, absolutely.
So we can bring it back to you with those amendments?
I will, I'll bring that back for the next meeting.
Okay, and so, or, well, go on, you might answer my question.
I was just gonna ask that, uh, Mr. Bush, if you include that in the packet sent to.
I will.
Chair for the packet.
I'll send it to Chair, or, Miss, I'm sorry, Miss Bush, right.
Well, I would ask, why don't you generate it in short order, send it to Dr. Benson so that it can be.
Right, I'll do that first.
Yeah, run through V S B A for, so we can get an opinion on that, just making sure that we remain in compliance with state code, and then it could be included as part of the packet next time, does that work?
That's a good suggestion, thank you.
Okay. I'll add to that, um, I was just talking to Ms. Ewing this week, talking about other policy things, and I, I got the impression, I'd be interested to see what she says to you, that while she does write the model policy for us to adopt, she's not on our payroll to give us specific legal advice about each policy, so I, I wonder if she'll actually weigh in on this or not. It'll be interesting to see.
Oh, okay, I see.
All right.
See your point, yeah.
Okay. All right, some more to come on that, all right.
And I did want to apologize to you, Ms. Gonzalez, that letter was written to you, I should have given you that ahead of time.
I'm not offended, don't worry, not a problem. Okay. All right, any further discussion on that policy, I think we're good, we'll revisit it next time, okay? All right, next we have authorization of signatures and absence of superintendent. Dr. Benson, anything you want to add on that?
Sure, I think it's, it's fairly self-explanatory, but each year, we are required by the Department of Education to approve and authorize a person or persons to sign all V D O E, uh, reports, documents, requisitions, or other official correspondence, uh, in the absence of the division superintendent, so I recommend to the board that you approve Dr. Jesse Boyd and Ms. Elizabeth Yuzersky as the designees for signature, the absence of myself for the period July 1, 2022, through the end of June 30, 2023.
All right, any questions or comments for Dr. Benson? No, okay. And Dr. Benson, is there any, do you need that approved this evening, or is that, you fine if we bring that back at the next meeting for approval?
No, I think you can bring it back if you want.
Okay. All right, so next, um, I'll walk through the policy manual updates, if you, I'll have, I'll leave a moment, and if you have something to add, a discussion point for that policy, feel free to speak up, otherwise, we'll move along. So first up for consideration is policy B D D H slash K D, public participation at school board meetings.
Yes, I would like to comment on that.
Go ahead, Mr. Rolls.
Okay, so, a couple of things on this, like to ask you about, Dr. Benson, I see that's, so it's the V S B A policy, and it was updated, I was assuming when we saw these, that these were the updates from this past February, but this one's actually from over a year ago, it's February 2021, is that abnormal that these don't come before us over, until over a year after the updates have been suggested by the V S B A?
Not necessarily a year, um, we do try to pace them, you know, so we don't overwhelm you with 10 per, we do get a packet from Ms. Ewing at V S B A, and then we just, from those packets, then we just select, and, you know, usually it's 10 or so, to give you a chance to reasonably review them, have input, and then adopt, unless, um, something is time-sensitive, in other words, it's, um, born of a statute change, and it needs to be in place as a policy at the local level, uh, to be aligned with, with state statute changes.
Okay, so I was trying to look and see what drove these, but it seemed like they seem to suggest that all these are driven by, or by and large, are driven by changes in the law, but not, I mean, I'll see some formatting, but.
No, I think they have a general, um, expectation at V S B A that, that all policies be touched, in quotes, or, or at least reviewed every five years, whether a statute, uh, predicates a change or not, and so accordingly, they keep track, and the anniversary's coming up, that, uh, it may be a simple, just updating of the, the, uh, the revised date at the bottom, as is the case sometimes, or it may be very minor changes, um, that aren't necessarily born of state statute.
Oh, so that was, obviously, this is over a year old, so, I hear, I see, is this some, you using the resource when we were discussing this earlier in the year, because it's remarkable how much the regulation reflects this policy change.
Did I use this, we're talking about the B D D?
Right, when we, we wrote that regulation, because we brought this up earlier in the year, that we wanted to make some changes, or were we all just thinking exactly what the V S B A was thinking a year ago?
Well, I, I don't know, I, I see what you're saying, because the regulations being proposed to be dropped, because the wording you adopted then is embedded in B D D H, yeah, I, I don't know, I'd have to ask, I guess.
Okay, I guess, great minds think alike.
Maybe they did adopt what, uh, the language that we inserted.
Except they did it in 2021, right?
Oh.
That year.
Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to check with her.
It looks like the bold, was the bold added to the policy? That's the part you're referring to, right?
I think that's, um, because that's directly from, if you look at the dash R, the, the next page, it's obviously been pulled from there and placed in the policy itself, I assume not to be, if it was, as Mr. Rolls is, is quizzing, adopted by the, um, V S B A, then not to be redundant, is our rec, you know, the regulation is a locally born, regulations typically are not V S B A-born, and so, our recommendation is to, it's superfluous, so you could re, release the regulation from the manual and just maintain that very same language in the policy itself.
Right, I guess that's what I meant, the bold part that is the same as what was in our regulation is, I think, added to that policy, right, like, that's not from the policy in 2021, that's a new section.
That's correct, and I guess Mr. Rolls' question is, why the date then, so I'll check with, um, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
And see if that's in fact what she did.
Okay, I need.
Too exact to be a coincidence, but. Too exact to be a coincidence, but, and this isn't a factor whether we adopt this later or not, but I will say that, you know, when I brought this up earlier in the year, there was a concern over privacy and having to reveal your home address, but then we also had the discussion, someone contacted me afterwards and had concerns about outsiders coming in and taking advantage of that to disrupt meetings. And we tried to introduce language, and it failed the time, but probably will try to do that again later at some point, just because I did since then come across a recent example in Hanover County, which you usually think of as a quiet county as well, but they had a controversy should come up there, the school board, which is, there's appointed by the board supervisors, so they had a caucus board supervisors meeting where they're bussing in people who had very different values than the residents of Hanover to try to influence the outcome, and I don't want that here. So I want to be proactive about putting language in policy at some point to prevent that.
Okay, any further discussion?
We discussed that before, and I agree. I think it can be very detrimental if we begin to allow outsiders to come that have a political bent on something we may be discussing. So I think it's a valid point to maybe make reference to that in our policies or regulation sometime in the future.
All right. All right, Dr. Cutright, feel free to chime in if you have comments on any of these policies. All right, so.
Just one comment, I think that section in bold is what we voted upon in January or February, where it says those wanting to speak may register with the clerk prior to the meeting, and then at the very last sentence says, in which the Magisterial District may reside, may reside, Dalvin, James Madison, James Moreau, or Shallow. I think she added that section that we've already voted upon.
Right, that's what we were just discussing.
Right.
Right, okay.
I think it reads well the way it is.
Okay. All right, so next we have policy E F B, food services. Policy G B B, prohibition.
I'm sorry, I do want to come on the E F B.
Okay, go, Ms. Rolls.
So I didn't get, I wasn't able to download this until last night, so I didn't get to spend as much time on this as I would like. So this kind of goes back to, you know, Dr. Benson tried to investigate this online a little bit. You know, it's not clear, they don't really tell you why they changed things. So obviously it makes a difference whether this is driven by a law or not, so it's, you know, it's possible you look at the rules here, talking about basically not really pursuing action against anybody who's taking food and not paying for it. And it's kind of a moot point right now, since it's free for all students at this point, but I do have concerns about, you know, that won't last forever, and then the financial impact on the division potentially.
So, sorry, say that again, like, what's your concern with the?
Well, I'm back up to just basic point, yeah. So, Dr. Bush, do you have any idea whether this is driven by a change in the law, or is that just kind of to be a V S B A question for E F B?
Yeah, on this first page, including your packet, I think, there's a summary, and for each of the proposed changes, it provides just a short statement. So for E F B, they said that the policy was updated to reflect an amendment to Virginia Code 22.179.7 by House Bill 697 and House Bill 703, an enactment of Virginia Code 22.1-207.3 by House Bill 698, and then the cross references at the bottom were updated.
Okay.
So I don't know if this cover sheet helps you, that I think is included in your packet.
It is.
So you can reference this as to why things were updated.
Okay, yeah, I will, I wasn't have time to do that this past time, but I'll do it before the next time. So I'll hold my other concerns until we come to it next meeting.
So it'll be up for action at the next meeting? But so I guess, just.
Right, but we'll have debate, or discussion, or if you want to call it there, too, and.
Agree, but so just as a reminder, right? Like, we get, the things come before us as discussion items so that we can discuss, and if there are questions about things that need to be changed or verified, right? It allows us time to do that, so that if there are changes that need to be made, they come back as an action, so it's a more efficient process. So I would just encourage us to try to adhere to that, right? For this, in the sake of time and the best use of everyone's time, so.
I'm sure I will ask maybe just more basic questions on that point. Obviously, this is a, to be, since it was a topic, I mean, nobody likes the idea of children missing meals, but just to talk about the practicality of it, I think it's important, too. So this is talking about not, you're striking out a sentence that was in there before, trying to find it. Or wait, oh yeah, now it says that, yeah, we will not ever file lawsuit against parents who don't pay for their food that your child is taking. So is that, I mean, there's the principle, then there's also just kind of the practical. I mean, have we ever had, ever, ever done that anyways, in this division?
No, not that I recall in our division. I think, I think statewide, the issue of charged meals that then went unpaid by families then became an issue where different divisions around the Commonwealth were utilizing different methods for trying to collect funds. One of them could have been what you, what you just stated. So I'm assuming that one of these House bills then, or one of these past legislate, pieces of legislation addressed that, and now you have it in the form of a proposed policy amendment to make sure that locally you're aligned with what, what the state statute now requires or prohibits.
That's what I assume as well, but I'll go ahead and look into it. I think that's enough for now, I'm sure.
Okay. All right, the next policy is policy G B B, prohibition of abusive work environments. Policy I G A J, driver education. Policy J B A, section 504, non-discrimination policy and complaint procedures. Policy J E D, student absences slash excuses slash dismissals. Policy J F C F, drugs in school. Policy J G D slash J G E, student suspension slash expulsion. It's a long one, and policy J G D A, disciplining students with disabilities. Cutright, did you have anything to comment on any of those, if you hadn't had a chance to speak up?
No, I've reviewed them all and don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's no further discussion, we'll move on to our information items. So we'll start with committee reports. Mr. Bush, do you have any committee reports to share with us this evening?
Yes, first time. I met with the Health and Safety Advisory Committee on April the 20th, and it was, it was very good. There's a lot of things that they discussed, but one of the big things, but there's, there's two immunization days, one on July 30th, be at the Health Department, which is Saturday, and the other's August 4th, 5:00 PM till 7:30, and high school, for high school and middle schoolers, I'm not sure where that one's going to be. And then I appreciated that we discussed a lot of different things, immunization, we discussed the use of EpiPens, we discussed inhalers, Narcan, we discussed the concussion policy, specifically middle school is now getting into sports a whole lot more, so what is a concussion policy in high school? They're looking at implementing those sorts of things in middle school, that was very good. We talked about the COVID response team, and the tests to stay, and updates we had on COVID, which was wonderful, talked about the family life education, and the curriculum that is involved with that, and that was also very good. We talked about a workforce grant, which is for $80,000, which is going to be wonderful, and they're going to apply for that. And then we had a lot of wellness updates by Anita Davis, which was very good. And overall, I was thinking Casey, let's see, Mary Fisher ran part of the meeting, and Casey ran the other part, what's her last name?
Nice, nice, just to, nice, Miss.
Miss. Anyway, Miss Fisher ran part of the meeting, and I'm sorry, this other part, I can't remember her name, I got Casey written down. Anyway, she ran the other part of the meeting, but it was a very good meeting, lasted about 45 minutes to an hour, and I think they covered an awful lot of material. They were very well prepared in their various aspects that they reported on. So that's it.
Margaret Nice.
Margaret Nice, thank you, yes, that's right, thank you.
All right, thank you to Mr. Bush. Ms. Hawk?
Yes, we had a very short Chesapeake Bay Governor's School advisory meeting in order to do some personnel updates and to get some, just current plans about going forward. I do want to report that they had a very successful student trip to Costa Rica, and it was, we had two students along, and I've heard from one of them, and I'm trying to get in touch with the other one, but they, they talk about the remarkable things they did in terms of observing the ecological differences in the area, as well as the potential for climate change. The projects that these young people are doing are phenomenal, and interesting as well, to those of us who, who can understand some of the biology and some of the chemistry and how they all interact. I can't tell you what an amazing staff, and volunteers, and support parents, because it's with the, the coming together of all of these groups that makes things like this possible. So there, there will be more staff updates as we go along to the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Mr. Rolls?
I had the privilege of attending my first C T E meeting. There was one scheduled early in the year, but it was unfortunately canceled, so it was good to finally get there and meet everybody. I had good reports from all the different organizations within C T E, and it was great hearing about all just the things our students are doing, going, winning awards are all over the place. So, excellent to see, and I thought a very interesting statistic, an important statistic that was presented, is that about 42% of our students applied at four-year colleges, which means awful lot, do not, which is great, I mean, they're ready to start life and start get to work. But, so it's very important to have those, help those students be ready to hit the ground running. And so it was good to see the opportunities, we also discussed Perkins Grant, fund some more. But as far as helping them hit the ground running, I do remember when I was campaigning, I did get to talk to one gentleman who had graduated from King George High School in the 90s, and just raved about how good the metalworking class was back then, and he actually was able to, he won some awards and translated that immediately to going and having a job himself, using that, those skills. But he was certainly of the impression that he didn't think that the students were getting that same kind of training now. And obviously, that's, that's his opinion, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to look around much, but, but what he was saying is, he got to work right away, now his business is going well, and he would like to hire more people, but he can't, he's not finding folks who are qualified. So important both for students to have good C T preparation for the workforce, but also helps our community to, you know, pipeline of good employees for them, so. So that's why I'm really hopeful that we can get the C T coordinated, it's been the budget now for several years, been axed over the years, so they can kind of make those connections between the community businesses and our students to make that happen, to benefit everybody.
All right, thank, okay, thank you, Mr. Rolls. Dr. Cutright, do you have any reports for us this evening?
No report, thank you.
All right, thank you. I do not have any committee reports either. All right, Dr. Benson, you have a Potomac Elementary modular update for us?
Just a real quick update, I know this board spoke, or we discussed the Potomac Elementary School, the modular building, which for memory's sake and for our public was, was essentially donated to us by Mary Washington University several years ago. It was decided, really, I think we had consensus that it would be more cost effective to replace that building, since it has fallen in disrepair, rather than try to repair the existing building. So I did present it as a capital improvement project item, given the cost of it certainly wouldn't fit in our operating budget. There was a such discussion previously in the fall of possibly using federal funding through the CARES Act. I was going to revisit that with this board, but, and in any rate, in the meantime, with some of the weather we've had lately and over the winter, the building has really become more of a hazard, certainly an eyesore. So I have engaged through emergency procurement with a local vendor to go out and disassemble that building and scrap the existing building. All the foundational issues, you know, will remain, so that when this board, or when the time comes for the county, and they can afford to replace that building and the space is needed, when that decision is made, or if that decision is made, that infrastructure is still there to be utilized. So I just wanted to update the board and the public, because several have asked questions about modular buildings, that's where we are.
All right, thank you.
And I want to thank, thank you, Dr. Benson, for responding so quickly with that one, I called you, thank you.
All right, and Dr. Benson, you continue on with your superintendent's report? If you have one?
I really stole my own thunder, that's really what I wanted to update you about, so I'm fine, thank you.
All right, thank you, all right, so we'll move on to our board comment. Mr. Bush?
Okay, yeah, I'm always the first one, and I'm never ready, I should be the second one. Okay, first I want to thank Sealston PTA, especially Ms. Thompson for the pledge and everything, that was very good. And then the Ms. Higgins and the art participants, all of this fantastic, all of the presentations, and then Mr. Wood, Mark Woodward and the STEM program and all the grants, wow, I was impressed especially with the whole pencil thing and the tablet and connecting that, and, you know, I just, I was thinking back to my classroom experiences, and, you know, I was in administration for many years, last time I was in a classroom was, I don't know, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, I guess, but I can remember computers were just starting to be used, and I remember trying to incorporate my computer with the screen and the kids, and think about that day, and then to where we've come now, is what a huge transition and advantage for education it is. So anyway, thank you for the, all the people involved in STEM program and the grants and everything that they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Hawk?
Yes, indeed, lots of thank yous tonight, and especially to the middle school, Ms. Huber, for that awesome video that has captured so much of what we're all about. And yes, there was music, and let's hope that there's always music in King George County. I think we mentioned last week that, or last meeting, that King George County has been identified as a winner of Music Education Award, and I don't remember all the details, perhaps, yes, and we, the music piece of preschool, preschool through post-graduation, and many, and we serve students post-graduation sometimes, the music piece can capture and touch each one of these students in so many ways. It gives students who are not excelling academically a way to shine, sometimes they're shining in both, sometimes it's simply by showing up and loving the music that we've made a pathway to that child. Whether that's the art that we've seen tonight, or the C T E hands-on projects, we have to offer pathways to every single child in our community, in our community. And the, the King George Education Foundation, which was begun some years ago by Pammy Ann Seth and a group, has been so remarkably successful. Foxmart is amazing, and I urge people to, to continue to support. Foxmart is amazing. And I could, I urge people to, to continue to support both monetarily and our industrial grants, our local industry, our, our local stores and folks. And thank you to, to groups like Access I that gave, you know, phenomenal amount. To Love Thy Neighbor. All of these different pieces of the community are coming together to support this. I also wanted to say wow to those innovation grants, every single one of them. They're remarkable. And again, they touch all of the children. The children are out there planting. And I, I happen to find my therapy in this little guy here. So having children connect with the worms, I love the worms. I'm going to order worms. And so many of the pieces, it, it, with the social gardening, the cooking, all of these pieces touched children that might not have been touched otherwise. That's exciting. And that's what our, our educational foundation does. I want to say a comment about the CTE, the Perkins Grant. We think that's a lot of money. It's not. It's a drop in the bucket. Thirty-eight thousand dollars might buy you one piece of equipment. It might, it, it certainly wouldn't go to set up a culinary school. It certainly wouldn't support all the things that our nurses aid programs. We have so many directions to go with CTE. We need to support increasing the Perkins Grant, if we can, to looking for other grants, to looking to our, increasing our law enforcement classes, our EMT classes. All of these are so important. And I will finish up by saying, one of the things I encourage all the school board members up here to do, and you, Mrs. Cutwright, is to attend the VSB A webinar on school law updates. It's June third, and I believe it's available by Zoom. Mrs. Bushrod will let us know. But it's one of the best sources of information that we get all year round. So I encourage folks to do that. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Mr. Rolls?
I'm not sure how much, how many original things I'll have, but I'll, I'll take it in order here. But I too is very impressed by the King George Educational Foundation. I got a little research to do. I wonder how long it's been around. Obviously, it's not always been here. So that's very appreciative of generosity of the folks who make that go and the hard time, the hard work that goes into enriching our education of all the kids in the division. Obviously, that really enhances the experience they have. And the next was public comments. I always love to see people come in and give a comment. It's really important to have engaged folks, you know, in the community. So and since there's just two of you, I'll thank you by name, Mr. Bush, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, Mills. Thank you for coming out. We always hear about, sorry. Did I not say Brown? Okay. You know, I meant, my apologies, Mr. Brown. Thank you for coming. And we always hear about in the news about the mom of errors who are all getting involved in education, trying to look out for the kids. So it's good to see some dads here too. So thank you. That's it. That's it for my time. I'll come to go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rolls. Dr. Cutwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank Seelston Elementary School for the Pledge of Allegiance and Ms. Howard for giving us an update on the PTA. As we all know, the PTA is an integral part of, of the school. Also, I enjoyed seeing the VSB A art participants presented by Mrs. Higgins. And like everyone else has said, the King George Foundation has certainly energized our educational system with hands-on experiential learning, and that's so important. I would like to make everyone aware that Teacher Appreciation Week is May 2nd through the 6th. And we need to recognize all of our teachers that work hard every day. I'd like to recognize the Teachers of the Year. That was Mr. Lonnie Southall from King George High School. Mr. Mark Fike, King, King George Elementary, or I'm sorry, King George Middle School. Ms. Molly Metz from Seelston Elementary. Ms. Sarah Richards, Richie from King George Elementary. And Ms. Robin Mitchell from Potomac Elementary. And Ms. Christina Royal, alum preschool teacher. As Ms. Hawk has already mentioned, King George County Schools was named a 2022 Best Community for Music Education by the National Association for Music Merchants Foundation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cutwright. And I'll again sound like a broken record right going last here this evening with my comment. But I thought it was awesome to see the Seelston PTA this evening and hear that they have reinstituted that board. So that's awesome. I know the PTAs do a lot for the, for the teachers, for the, for the families of the school. And I just, I think that's great that they were, they were able to pull that off and get a bunch of motivated folks to participate. So I look forward to seeing what they have to bring and share with the community going forward. Also, the, I thought there's a lot of positivity tonight. And I know Mr. Bradshaw takes a lot of pride in the King George Education Foundation, the innovation grants. I, it was kind of neat to see that come full circle. I remember when he came and presented the winners to us earlier this year, talked about, you know, coming back at the end of the year to show us all the great things that they did with their, with their, with their grants. And they certainly did. A lot of that really hits home for me, the STEM stuff. I'm an engineer. I think that's super cool. I love cooking. It was great to see a bunch of little kids learn to use knives. I was wondering if they were like old dog knives. I know my kids have done the Dr. Young program and stuff. That's all really neat stuff. On the gardening, my kids go to Potomac, but my son is super excited to be a third grader, I think, and join the garden club next year. So I'm excited about my, my spider plant and like my daughter, they planted seeds for, I think they planted them for Earth Day. They brought them home for Earth Day. So over the weekend, she and I planted her little corn plant and her bean plant in little pots and put them in the window. So just all of it's like great to see a bunch of, you know, additional life skills and, you know, appreciation for the earth and, and, you know, being, being healthy and all that, and all of that. The music, all of it is just awesome. And lastly, I want, also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Brown and Mr. Mills for coming, making public comments and for sticking around. So it's great to see some new faces in the crowd. So thank you for that. And that is all I have this evening. So if there are no further comments, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes. Pursue it the State Code Section 2.2-3711.8.1. Oh, we have a new one. I'm sorry. I got that far. For the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment stipends, substitutes, resignation, and retirement of employees of the school board, I move that we enter closed session.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, Chair, both aye. We're now in closed session. Is Dr. Cutwright on with us yet? Okay.
I move that the King George Council Board return to open session. Certified Pursuit Code 2.2-3712D. Only public business matters, law exempt from open meeting requirements under this chapter. No public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second. Certify, I'm sorry, certify.
I certify.
Dr. Cutwright, do you certify?
Certify.
I certify as well. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, we have returned to open session. Do we have an action to approve personnel as presented?
I move that we approve personnel as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, we are now adjourned.